Now I'll call to order the Planning Commission meeting for Tuesday, June 5, 2012. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
... of the United States and to the Republic from which you stand, a nation.
Okay, Kate, could we have roll call, please?
Kidd?
Here.
Bryson?
Here.
Evans?
Here.
Knutson?
Here.
Shannon?
Here.
Williams?
Here.
Fuhrborn?
Here. Everybody's here tonight, okay. Are there any agenda changes or revisions this evening?
No, there are not.
Okay. Commissioners, you've been, you have copies of the minutes for the May 15, 2012 Planning Commission meeting. Are there any revisions or changes? If not, can we have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay. Next, we have public comments on non-agenda items and Agenda Items 6, 7, and 8. And you folks are all here for the meeting tonight, correct? Okay, so. Final orders, resolutions, and written communications, and we don't have any of those this evening. Just moving right along here. Next is public hearing. And I now call to order the public... You ready? Okay, the public hearing is now open for the purposes of considering a request for extension of a conditional use permit identified as File CUP 2011-01. The subject property is at 711 Northwest Highway 101, and the approved conditional use permit is for a drive-through coffee kiosk. The applicant is Kelsey Osland for Dutch Brothers Coffee, and the property owner is WIO LLC by Jim Ruggieri, is that right? The request is for a one-year extension of the approved permit. Are there any objections to the Commissioner's jurisdiction? Planning Commissioners, are there any abstentions or disqualifications based on conflict of interest, personal bias, or ex parte communications? Okay, staff will now read the substantive criteria that apply to this hearing.
The criteria for deciding on a conditional use permit includes 1732 general commercial zone, 1756 off-street parking and loading requirements, 1752 supplementary regulations and exceptions, 1774 commercial design standards, and 1760 conditional uses. Specifically, 1760-80 conditional uses time limitation allows for extension of a conditional use permit as fouls. A conditional use permit shall become void after one year after approval, or after such greater or lesser time as may be specified as a condition of approval unless within that time the required building construction alteration or enlargement has been commenced and diligently pursued, or if no such construction until the permitted activity is being regularly conducted on the premises. The Planning Commission may extend a use permit for an additional period of one year subject to the requirements of this title. No more than one such extension may be granted.
Testimony, arguments, and evidence must be directed to the applicable substantive criteria just described, or to other criteria that you believe apply to the subject of this hearing. Any person may raise an issue either by testifying in person, or by delivering a letter to the Planning Department no later than the close of the evidentiary hearing record of this hearing. Failure within that time to raise an issue accompanied by statements of evidence sufficient to give the Planning... Excuse me. The Planning Commission, an opportunity to respond to the issue, will preclude an appeal to the Land Use Board of Appeals based on that issue. In addition, failure by the applicant within that time to raise constitutional or other issues related to proposed conditions of approval with sufficient specificity to allow the city to respond to the issues will preclude an action for damages based on those issues in the Circuit Court. Finally, prior to the close of the evidentiary record of this hearing, a participant may request an opportunity to present additional evidence, arguments, or testimony regarding the application. If the participant requests such an opportunity prior to the close of the evidentiary record, then the Planning Commission will either continue the hearing for at least seven days, or leave the record open for at least seven days to allow the submission of additional written evidence, arguments, or testimony. Before the staff presents a report, I would like to summarize the public hearing procedures, which have been adopted by City Council. A brochure outlining these procedures is at the entrance to council chambers. The staff will present a report and respond to any Planning Commissioner questions. After that, any person may speak for up to three minutes. If the Planning Commission has questions, your time responding to any questions will not be counted against your time limit. If you wish to speak, please write your name and mailing address clearly on the sign-up list at the entrance. Please speak directly into the microphone and begin by stating your name and mailing address. If you also have written testimony to submit into the record, please provide a copy to the recorder. Staff, will you... Your report, please.
Okay. Right, I'd just like to say a little bit about the history of what happened last year. On June 7, 2011, the Planning Commission adopted the conditional use permit. This project is at a key site, which I am showing on this aerial photo. It is at the intersection of Sixth and Highway 101. It is right in this area, here. And it's across the street from the Artist Co-op Gallery, it's north of these little shops, and to the east is... Did I say north? Yes, okay. And to the east is the Cultural Center. This lot has been the home to a lot of restaurants in the past. The applicant submitted on March 18 of last year, proposing to remove the existing building and replace it with a 367-square-foot coffee kiosk. The Planning Commission approved that final order on June 7 of 2011. In early April this year, the applicant submitted building plans, at which time the Planning Department notified the owner of revisions and additional information needed in order to meet the conditions of approval, both in the site plan and the conditional use permit. Specifically, staff requested more detail on the block face of the retaining wall, and the pedestrian amenities, garbage storage, lighting, landscaping plan, and minor changes to the building facade. The application for extension has... The applicant has attributed the delay in construction to redesigning the retaining wall for aesthetic appeal and coordinating revisions in the landscape plan. I do have some pictures of the site. This is... These were taken last year. This is the existing building, and I will point out here that there is an access to the highway, that they are closing with this project, and they will then be sharing the access to the north with the building on that lot. They will be removing the old landscape. I haven't seen the landscape plan yet, but we should have some improved landscaping. The building will go, and they will be replacing it with a building, and I will show you some details from that building. And they will be undergrounding the utilities, the overhead power lines leading to the building. They also will be replacing this retaining wall in the back of the site, and their construction plans include pushing this wall back and the hill back a little bit to make a little bit more room for the site. They are going to be grading the site so that it is level or nearly level, as opposed to the existing grade which slopes to the highway right away. And they will be improving the intersection here at Northwest Sixth. It is overly wide right now. They will be... I drew this line to show that they will be bumping it out, making the crossing distance shorter, and also directing traffic in a more orderly way, and slowing it down a little bit as it turns the corner to get into the site.
Will there be... This is... I'm glad you mentioned that. The past several days, I've thought about that exit at the south end of their parking lot there, and how that does just flow onto that street. Will there be some kind of a definition at the end of that parking lot that we're going to request for so that cars don't just roll into that street to catch that light? Because I can see an accident there.
Well, here is the site plan. This is the site plan that was originally submitted and approved last year. This is somewhat revised from the original. It does show this bump out here. But this... Well, this... No, wait, I take it back. This is the one that was originally submitted. This is more like the one that we accepted by the time the revisions were completed last year. And it does show the sidewalk is extending around this loop and down into the site. This is to make it ADA compliant. Otherwise, we had originally some steps up, because remember, this is because they are leveling the site out, they're filling in here, and they will end up with a retaining wall of about 30 inches. So to make it ADA accessible, they had to wrap the sidewalk around and then bring it over to the kiosk. But this does increase the... It narrows the width of the crosswalk, and it does bump this out so that there is more definition to cars coming in and turning into the site.
Okay.
And to some extent, to cars leaving the site as well. But it is still... It's kind of a tight corner, it's an odd angle.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm. Let's see, okay, so this is just zooming in on the site plan. And as I mentioned, we do have some things that we need to get from them in terms of information and some, maybe some changes in details here, but generally, this is what they're proposing, and it is in conformance with the approved site plan from last year, with some minor exceptions. So it's up to... Now, so just to mention again that they do have an approved CUP, but it is expiring two days from now. And so they are asking you for an extension of one year. And that basically concludes my report, unless you have questions?
No, thank you. Any Commissioners, anyone?
Well, just a... I wanted to follow up on a question, Eric. As far as the egress, what kind of signage will be there to say, is it a stop? Is it a yield? Is it oncoming traffic will not stop? Because it's pouring right out. I can see the traffic coming down from the Best Western and that intersection concern.
I will have to see if Public Works put in something in the conditions about signage. I don't recall right offhand whether they did. They do not have anything here about signage.
Patrick?
The issue before us tonight, then, is not necessarily revisiting the existing CUP, but very in an administrative fashion to make a determination whether or not to extend the existing CUP for one year. And according to their request for extension, it will probably be a matter of weeks before construction starts.
That's what they've indicated to us. They still need to get approval of the plans that they've submitted to us.
Retaining wall is the issue, and what is the issue?
Well, in our commercial design standards, we specify that we want an aesthetically pleasing retaining wall. We have two retaining walls proposed. One is the new one that comes, goes towards the back of the property, holding the hill in place. The other one is this landscape wall that is 30 inches high, and is part of their... It can be considered, if it's attractive, part of their pedestrian amenities. It can be used for seating perhaps, or, you know, just to contain the site.
So have they submitted these new drawings for the walls?
No, they haven't. They may have some materials with them tonight. We have representatives of Dutch Brothers, and the property owner, and the consulting firm.
But that design review really is not the purview of this group, it's your department's...
It's a staff function at this point.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, thank you, Deborah. Okay. Applicant, would you like to come forward? You have some testimony for us this evening? And please state your name and address into the microphone, please.
Good evening, my name is Jim Ruggieri. The address is 1121 Southeast Bruce Way in Newport, representing the property owner. This is Mike Bujarski, the franchisee.
Hi, I'm Mike Bujarski, and my address is 427 Northeast 7th Street in Newport, Oregon, and I'm the franchisee. Thank you.
And the reason we're here this evening, we had a discussion with the planning staff about beginning the wall, and rather than try to race the clock, it didn't make sense to do that, because we didn't know the weather. As you've lived here very long, you know it could start raining and keep raining for a week or two, and we didn't want to open that up under those conditions. In that, we're asking for the extension, and as staff has mentioned, we did submit plans, we haven't set on our hands for the last year. Unfortunately, the cost of one of these walls is substantial. And to use as an example that you're probably real familiar with, the gas station site just to the north of where we're seated this evening has those large block, concrete block walls. Without getting into anybody else's property and commenting on the aesthetics of it, I gathered that that was not something that Lincoln City, you know, thought was particularly aesthetically pleasing. So then, after spending some time considering that type of a wall, we then did some extensive work on just a poured-in-place concrete wall. The problem, if you will, with that is that you need to shore up that hillside. The shoring costs more than the wall. So that didn't become a particularly exciting possibility, even though it'd just be a flat wall which is there, though the green on there is... I won't comment on colors. But anyway, you know, that wasn't a possibility. The school district, through their bond levy, has built a number of buildings and constructed walls, and there's an example. I didn't bring a picture tonight, because when I went down there on Monday, it was raining. But there's a wall, and they use blocks that are eight by 18 inches. So, you know, it doesn't look massive, I mean, it just blends in. And Ms. Osland, who's here this evening, who can comment, Kelsey, redesigned the wall to try and get the heights down, because common sense will tell you the higher you go, the more expensive it is. So we've found a solution that is financially within the budget, and to keep everything that's, you know, with those kind of considerations. I met with the contractor today, and we called the engineer, and she is now engineering that wall, which is the blocks that I described for you. The building plans itself, the then-Planning Commission had some changes, and the code required some changes to what would be a standard Dutch Brothers kiosk. And so that took some time to get that designed, and that's been submitted. And as staff has told you, there's some just very minor tweaks on that, which I believe are completed, to the building itself. So it's not, once again, we've been sitting on our hands doing nothing, and now come before you asking for a year. It's just, this is where we are, given the constraints we had to work with, and we're ready to proceed. So we'd ask to request that, the year. If there's anything else I could share, I'd be happy to try.
Commissioners, any questions? No, thank you. Did you have... Go ahead.
So maybe you can shed some light on the... I think it was your question, or it was Dawn's, about the signage of coming out, when you're coming out of the...
No, I understand. Go ahead, the South going on the Sixth.
Right. Is there gonna be some kind of a sign there or anything?
I wasn't aware, and do you want to speak to it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, if you could come up and... Yes, please.
Good evening, I am Kelsey Osland, 500 River Vista Drive, Grants Pass, Oregon. Like Jim said, I'm the designer of the project, civil engineer. Have worked a lot the last couple of years with all the stakeholders, balancing aesthetics and code requirements. So that there... Yes, there is... I'll get up and actually show you. Erin? Mr. and Mrs.?
Excuse me, is it just...
We can't hear what you're saying when you're...
Actually, there should be a laser...
Pointer over there someplace.
You need to be at a microphone, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Right here is a stop bar. On this selected drawing, it's not a complete striping plan, so there actually will be "stop" written on the pavement here. And a stop sign. Let's see, I've lost...
Right there, if you stop right there. You see where it says install standard stop sign and stop bar?
Right. So right there, it... Perfect. So that's where the stop sign and stop bar will go.
Okay, thank you.
And we've worked the sidewalk around the site, like Deborah was saying, to provide a more definition to the ingress and egress there to Sixth Street.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, anybody else have any questions? Okay. And so I guess I do have one. Is there anybody else from your staff or team that's going to speak tonight, or... Okay. So what is the timing of this? I mean, you say you're ready to go in the next couple of weeks or so. I've been on the Commission for a number of years, and sometimes when we give extensions for a year, a year from now, we're back looking for another extension, or something has happened. So I'm just kind of curious, what are your goals and plans right now?
Well, I can tell you on the construction side that, for example, we just started a project three weeks ago in Millplain, on Millplain in Vancouver, Washington, and it's taking about four weeks for all the site construction to be done. So actually, once we get going, these can happen really quickly. I'll let Jim speak to his start date a little bit better.
Okay, thank you.
Just because it's...
That's quite all right.
Now that we've identified the means to do it, and I've actually seen the contractors work, you know, I envision signing the contract end of next week, and then it's just a matter of getting everybody staged. So I'd hope... I'm gonna say a month, because I don't want to tell you two weeks.
I understand, yeah.
And then, you know, we're sitting here, and somebody says, well, jeez, they took three weeks. So...
It's soon.
It's about three days to take the building down and get, you know, and everything's lined up to do that. The wall will come out, it'll take about a day, and, you know, dig it out, and they'll start building it back. I mean, once, as Kelsey pointed out, once construction begins, you know, it'll go quickly. For those of you who are here for the building to the north, on a Sunday when people left town, there was nothing there. And when they came back the following Saturday, there was a 10,000-square-foot building framed and sited. There were 18 people there working for, you know, six days, and that's what it took to put it up. So, you know, things happen quickly, and this is only 367 square feet. It's just getting everything lined up and...
Well, I know it'll take a while. I was just... The initial start date is soon, that's the...
Yeah, yes. I mean, the weather's good. Doesn't rain after the 4th of July, right? So...
Okay. Thank you. Patrick?
Well, once you open that ground up, I mean...
Yeah, I understand, I understand.
Yeah, we want to be open as soon as possible. We're really excited to spread the Dutch love to another community, and just dig in and get involved.
Okay, thank you. Patrick?
But at this point in time, realistically, you're not clear of the planning process. Have you applied for your building permit yet?
Oh, yeah. Everything was applied for. What Planning came back to us with is, we need these additional things to what's already been submitted. For instance, they need the engineers to stamp plans for the wall. So when I get them, and they told me it'd be less than a week, and I'll...
If I could interrupt, so this is not a delay, planning... And I don't mean this in that sense, but it's not a planning delay, it's a building permit series of conditions that you're trying to get finalized, and once you have those finalized, the permit will be issued and start construction.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, anyone else have any questions? Okay, thank you very much, we appreciate you.
The other folks are here, in case you end up...
No, we're all good.
But we don't want to pick if you read me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now it's time for other public testimony. Does anybody have something they want to say, need to say? We're all good. Okay. Any member of the audience wish to speak in favor of this proposal? Are there any members of the audience that wish to speak against this proposal? Is there any person who has neutral testimony? Is there any testimony from representatives of public agencies? Don't have anybody here? The applicant may have, now have the opportunity to present rebuttal testimony? Well, I'm just going through this list of things, guys, sorry about that. Is there any further... If there is no further testimony, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Moved.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Aye. Okay. Hearing's now closed. So what is the pleasure of the Commissioners? Any discussion, or do we have a... Can we have a motion?
I move that Planning Commission adopt staff findings and approve an extension for one year for the...
That would be for conditional use permit 2011-01?
Correct.
Okay. Second. Roll call, please.
Shannon?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Knutson?
Yes.
Kidd?
Yes.
Bryson?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Fuhrborn?
Yes. I believe that we didn't make any changes, and I think staff was prepared to do a final order for that this evening, if somebody needs to wait around, or is that...
One right here, and Kate will pass it out.
Oh, okay. Quicker than I thought.
Just anticipating that you might approve it. I just want to show you, since we've got a little time here, we do... I did have some elevation drawings. This is a Dutch Brothers from somewhere else, but it's pretty similar to, I think, what the drawings show will be our Dutch Brothers here in Lincoln City. This is the east elevation that will face the highway. And the west elevation, south elevation, has an awning over it for, which I didn't point out, but it's in our conditions of approval from last year, to provide a pedestrian seating area.
Did someone on staff proofread this, or we all good with this?
We're all... We're good with it.
No, no, I was just... Okay. Commissioners, do you want to take a minute and look at all this? Well, yeah, would you take a look at it?
Spelling problems, I'm sorry.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, okay. The commission, do we need this for now, Kate, or after the motion?
Before.
Before the motion, okay. The commission is about, about to vote on a final order for an extension of conditional use permit 2011-01. The applicant for this matter is Kelsey Osland of, for Dutch Brothers Coffee and the property owner is WIO LLC by Jim Ruggeri. The final order is written, is a written record of the commission's decision that followed, followed its public hearing held tonight, June 5th, 2012. The Planning Commission's decision is for approval of a one-year extension. A final order reports the findings of the commission, explaining how the decision relates to the evolution, evaluation criteria. It includes the vote of each member and briefly states the basis for any minority vote. The vote on a final order is not meant to be a second vote, but the subject of the, on the subject of the hearing. If the final order accurately reflects the findings of the majority and the decision, commissioners should approve that final order. Is there a motion to adopt final order number 2011-01?
So moved.
Okay.
One second, excuse me, just a second, actually, 2012-05.
Always the final order, okay. It is for conditional use permit, 2011-01, okay. Do we have a motion then?
Yes. You heard what I said. So moved.
Second?
Second.
Roll call, please, Kate.
Williams?
Yes.
Knutson?
Yes.
Kidd?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Bryson?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Sureborn?
Yes. Okay. A notice of decision will be mailed to the applicant and others who participated in this hearing, in person or in writing. The decision may be appealable to city council. Okay, thank you, gentlemen, ladies. That's it, except for next.
Thank you.
Good bet, thank you, folks. I don't have a written agenda, so it'll take me just a minute to get back there, guys. Okay, what is next on our... Business Walking and Biking Plan, update and discussion on July open house.
Thank you. Yes, it's been about six months since I was here last, talking about the walking and biking plan. And Don Williams is on our, on our project advisory committee, so this is going to be old news for him, but the rest of you may like to hear what we're doing and see what's going to happen in the next couple of months. Since I talked with you last, we held an open house on January 29th and it was a very good event. It was the same day as the Jambalaya cook-off upstairs on the fourth floor. We held the event in the hallway on the third floor, so everyone who came to the event through this rooftop parking area had to walk right through our exhibits and so we caught some people who were not necessarily coming just to see us. But that was good, it was all good input. And since that time, we have had two project advisory committees, that's what the PAC stands for. This is a group that we formed last fall and they have been meeting now several times. It includes representatives of a number of our local organizations and our retail areas of town and the school district and, anyway, a lot of good people. Here's the open house, couple pictures of that. You can see that the hall got pretty crowded at times. We had consultants describing our maps, potential tools that we could use to improve our walking and biking situation here in town. And the majority of the comments that were collected were about existing deficiencies and needs in the community. The PAC meeting that we had in April was to talk about tools again, how, okay, we've already identified the needs and deficiencies, now what do we do about it? What are other communities doing that might work here? So in this case, we have an interesting graphic that shows sharos using, sharing, symbols that show that bikes will be sharing a traffic aisle with, I mean, a lane with motor traffic. And we have sidewalks over here, we have a buffer strip and then, of course, we have the two, two cars in the turning aisle. We also talked a little bit and, about a road diet and that was quite controversial in, in Depot Bay when it was proposed there a few months ago. But we are looking at it and will, and have a white paper that's kind of a general analysis of what it might do to our road configuration in a couple areas of town where we have four lane, but we have no room for bike lanes. We have, and this is on the highway, of course, and we have no room, very little room for sidewalks. Parking is squeezed and so we are, we are suggesting this as something we might wanna consider and pursue when we do the transportation master plan that will come next.
This all has to be approved with ODOT, doesn't it?
ODOT is working with us on this and it's been a very good working relationship. We have liaison who is with the Transportation and Growth Management Program that gave us the grant for this study and plan and he is a joint, well, that's a joint program of ODOT and the Department of Land Conservation and Development. We have consultants who are working with us on the transportation master plan who, and this has also been funded by ODOT, and one of the regional staff is, has been participating in all those meetings. So we have pretty good communication with ODOT right now on this stuff. But we also think it's really important to hear what the local people have to say about it and especially adjoining property owners. So far, we've had some really positive feedback. So, the last meeting that we had in May, May 21st, we talked about those kinds of tools, but we said, now how do we apply these in the city? We don't have the resources in our planning effort to go street by street. So how are we going to relate those planning tools to the needs and deficiencies we've identified on the streets? We made a typology of streets, including the Highway 101 is its own type and the other three types are local streets, high use, medium use, and low use. And we asked our plant, project advisory committee for this meeting to go through the maps and tell us whether they agreed with the way that, the way we had assigned the types to our existing streets. And so we got lots of comments. This is just the one part of the north section. We had north, central, and south. And it was, I think, a very good meeting. We got a lot of good input. And Don can, you know, he can throw in his two cents here anytime, if you have something to add about that meeting or anything else. The next meeting is coming up quickly on Wednesday, June 13th and here's our agenda. It's kinda small, but I just want to mention that we will be talking about prioritizing bike and ped improvements for the city. And again, it's, it's not specific corners or specific streets we're talking about, but it's the type of, of improvements. We're going to be, and I can show you a little bit more in a minute, we're also going to be talking about funding options, particularly our local options for funding. And this, I think, will generate some interesting discussion. We have always, we're, we're looking for state and federal monies to bring to Lincoln City and that's usually not very controversial. If we can get some money in here to do a project that, that we say, that we've said we want, then, you know, that's all to the good. But for local funding sources, it gets a little more difficult because it means adding more taxes or more fees or something to generate that additional income so that we can make the improvements that we say we want to have. We're going to be hearing more about the road diet and our ODOT person will be here to field any questions about that. And we'll also be talking about other implementation techniques that eventually will come to the Planning Commission, such as ordinance changes or policies and that kinda thing. So, at our meeting on the 13th, we are going to be looking at a prioritization chart, something like this, where the PAC members will have an opportunity to, they'll have one dot for this particular one, Highway 101. What's your most, what do you feel is your highest priority? And the, and we also ask our PAC members to consider those that they represent. If they are representing, for instance, Bama or Ocean Lake Business District or Nell Scott Neighborhood Association, or if they're representing the school or social services, we try to have them keep that in mind and ask them to, and these are people who now have been spending months talking about these, these streets in our town and the needs, deficiencies, and possible improvements. We're asking them to put, put a dot in one of these categories and tell us why they are choosing that as their highest priority. This is for US Highway 101. We also have one for our, for each of our types of local streets, high use, medium use, and low use. And in this case, the options vary a little bit. Instead of, well, let's see, four pedestrian facilities, bike facilities, intersection treatments, and signage and programs, we also add in traffic calming measures. So this will be an interesting discussion and we don't want it just to be about where do you place the dot, but also we're asking them, okay, when we talk about sidewalk improvements, is your preference to put in a full width concrete sidewalk in as many places as we can, knowing that that will be many fewer places than if we instead relied on maybe some traffic calming or some signage and programs for our initial efforts? And then work towards the day when we can afford to put in sidewalks everywhere that they're needed. So it will be a very interesting discussion. The public is always invited to come to the project advisory committee meetings. The emphasis is on the members, but always in the past, we have never had so many people, although we've, we've had quite a few people who've come to sit in, but we've never had so many that we haven't been able to incorporate them in the meeting and, and ask for their comments. So, anyway, that's coming up on the 13th. On the 15th, we're holding our second open house and we decided that the best way to reach a big group of people would be to go to the farmer's market. And so we expect to be there on Sunday, July 15th, and it will be in a tent outside unless the weather just absolutely doesn't permit it and then we'll have to move into the cultural center. But we want to offer them information about the tools that we intend to use to improve our walking and biking and we want to ask them about what they think their priorities would be and just get general input. So, once we've done that, the consultants will be developing the draft plan and they expect to have that ready in mid-August. And then the, we hope to hold a joint workshop with the Planning Commission and the city council on the draft plan. And then we will be bringing it to the Planning Commission for a public hearing and on to the city council for public hearing in the fall. And that will wrap up the planning process. And we hope then that that will put us in a good position for applying for grant money and also knowing what our next steps will be in implementing the plan.
Thank you.
Yes.
Anybody have any questions, Deborah?
Your lives were so... You reconfigured the rotor range?
Well, it probably depends on the location. Undergrounding utilities is, is quite expensive. But we do have a third initiative going on right now that has to do with the gap improvement between 23rd, south, southeast 23rd and 35th. And we do have money already earmarked, $9 million to do that project. We ran into a snafu with ODOT a few years ago because they were insisting on a five-lane cross-section and we had only said we wanted three lanes so we could, we could have a turn lane where we don't have one now. We only have two lanes in that section and we really need a turn lane. We also asked for a traffic control light at 32nd, 32nd Street Southwest. And now that has all been resolved, they're on board, they're, they're designing for us a three-lane with the turn lane and the state traffic engineer is taking another look at the traffic light and we are hopeful that we are going to get approval for that traffic light at 32nd. So the money is there to pay for that. We are going to have, besides the three lanes, we're also going to have sidewalk and bike lanes on both sides, the whole improvement, all the way down. There has been some discussion about undergrounding utilities and I think it goes back to the urban renewal funds because, you know, we do have some funds left in urban renewal, but that has been a discussion at the council about whether or not we are going to put that urban renewal money in that basket, you know, to underground the utilities in the Nell Scott area along with this project. Of course, there are other areas of town where we, well, where we have, most areas of town where we still have overhead utilities. And part of our problem with our sidewalks is that oftentimes the pole is right in the middle of the sidewalk. And so if we can't afford to underground the utilities, hopefully we can figure out a way to move the poles over to the side. So that would at least improve accessibility. It's, yes, it's over a million for sure. Ocean Lake was done a few years ago and it made a big improvement there. Exactly. And the, the council has to grapple with that one, at least for part of the community.
Thank you, Deborah. Anybody else, any questions, comments? Okay. Thank you very much, Deborah. So we just look forward to hearing from you as we progress through the summer then on when our hearings and things will be.
And I encourage you to come to the meetings on June 13th and the open house on the 15th of July.
Okay, thank you. Next, any new business, Richard?
We have none.
No new business. Reports and comments from the Community Development Director?
Dan, I have no comments tonight.
Jones not here. Commissioners, does anybody have any comments or anything they'd like to bring up? Okay, no public this evening. Future agenda, next meeting is Tuesday, June 19th. What is on the calendar for that day so far?
Nothing.
Nothing.
The question is, is there something that you would like to have on it or should we cancel the meeting? And... And before you decide that, also recognize that the next meeting, next scheduled meeting is Tuesday, July 3rd, which is the day before the July 4th holiday.
That's probably a good one to cancel, I would think, the, the 3rd of July. I mean, I, I'll be busy.
We have nothing scheduled for that night either.
We have nothing scheduled, yeah. I, I would just assume we didn't schedule anything for the 3rd of July, and I don't know about the other one.
Me too.
I agree.
Yeah, okay. So do we want to have, is there something that the commissioners would like staff to prepare for us for the next meeting, or are we going to take a little sabbatical? That's the question.
Well, my opinion is, if we don't have something on the agenda, there's plenty of work later on in the year that is going to occupy everyone, so why have an artificial meeting?
Yeah. And actually, starting in late July, things will really pick up.
Okay, that's, that sounds good, most everybody concerned, I believe, so. That being said, tentatively, when would our next meeting be?
Would be July 17th.
July 17th, okay. That sounds, that sounds fine. Does anybody else have anything? Okay, with that, the meeting's adjourned. Thank you.